Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the fourth of our five public hearings on the New York State Foundation Aid Formula. My name is Anita Murphy. I previously served as the district superintendent at Capital Region BOCES, a superintendent of schools, and worked, quite frankly, all over the state in my career. I'm joined today by our panel, the president of the Rockefeller Institute of Government, Robert Magna. You guys switched seats on me. Dr. Brian Backstrom, Director of Education Policy Studies for the Rockefeller Institute, and Dr. Lisa Parshall, distinguished professor of political science at Damon University and a Rockefeller Institute fellow. As a reminder to everybody, this hearing is being livestreamed and a recording will be posted directly after the meetings today on the Rockefeller Institute website. Because we're livestreaming, some audience members may be recognizable in the footage by staying in this auditorium. You are consenting to the possibility of being in the background of some of today's recordings. A couple of other housekeeping notes before we start. We have today an ASL interpreter who will be providing interpreter services to the right of the stage. And although we do not have simultaneous interpretation services on site today, a transcript will be provided into multiple languages and posted on the Rockefeller Institute website. If you have any questions about the foundation aid study or this hearing, please talk to one of our wonderful event staff members who are sitting at the tables out there. A couple of quick things. Clearly, emergency exits are located in the back and out the side, and the restrooms are out that door and directly to the right. Before we begin, I'm going to ask everybody to please silence your cell phones. We would like to maintain quiet in the room so that the panel can hear testimony being provided clearly. Importantly, on behalf of the Rockefeller Institute, we would like to express a sincere appreciation today to Principal John, I do not want to butcher this name, Mush Tare, and the staff of the Lawrence Central School District who welcomed us here today. It is not, it is not a small thing to have something like this happen, and we are very much appreciative. Did I butcher that, Joel?
[applause]
Thank you. Thank you all for being incredibly gracious hosts. We'd also like to thank you all for being here. We know that it's not easy to get out and travel, and we are very appreciative that you are here to provide testimony and to listen to testimony. So just some background. The purpose of these hearings is to hear the voices across New York State on the foundation aid formula. As you all know, the budget this year, 2425, called for the Rockefeller Institute to conduct a study on the state's foundation aid formula and discuss potential modifications to how the formula works. As a part of this study, the researchers at the Rockefeller Institute are conducting these hearings and are collecting feedback from across the state. Just a couple of things. If you are not speaking today and would like to provide testimony, you can do that on the Rockefeller Institute website. It's easy, there's a form. And if you are providing testimony and you would also like to provide that testimony written, please just load it right there onto the website. Feedback from the portions of this hearings will be incorporated into the foundation aid study and will be used to inform the final report on the findings and the discussion of policy options, which will be presented to the governor in early December of this year, 2024. I will now turn it over to Bob Magna to provide some introductory remarks.
Hi, thank you. I'll be very brief because we want to hear from the folks who have traveled here to give testimony. Again, I want to thank the folks at Lawrence here for inviting us. I think, you know, some folks in New York should make the trip to a place like Lawrence. It's a beautiful trip from Albany. I always think traveling to this part of the state is always, you know, a pretty trip, no matter what time of year you're making it. So again, thank you for having us here today. We'll try to get right to where we want to go, but let me give you just a few slides that'll take five seconds to go through. But again, Anita hit on some of this to preregister at our final hearing in Gilderland, which is next week, and then use the written comment submission form that Anita talked about. This kind of gives you the timeframe we're working under, which I try not to characterize it too much as, let me say, it's a tight timeframe we're working under. And so we're in the middle of the public hearing piece, which will end next week, and then we'll continue to get written submissions for a time after that, and we will produce a written report by December 1st to the governor and the legislature. School aid's complicated, the way we give money out through the formula. And a lot of the elements on this graphic are elements that were appropriate maybe in the year 2000, or the year 2007, or the year 2014, but they're not necessarily appropriate anymore. And so the time for updating the formula has probably been around for a while, but what we're going to try to do, based on the comments we're hearing and the research we're doing, is try to come up with reasonable ways, feasible ways, to simplify, to make more transparent, and to address fairness issues where possible, the foundation aid formula. That's a magical, difficult process to do by December 1st, but we are in the process of doing that, and that's why we value your input. So with that, I think I'll let Brian and Lisa introduce themselves, and we should get started.
I am Brian Backstrom. I'm the Director of Education Policy Studies at the Rockefeller Institute.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Lisa Parshall. I'm a professor of political science at Damon University, which is out in Amherst in Erie County, western part of the state.
Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to start our testimony. A couple of things for folks. You will have six minutes. There is a timer. We're going to ask you to come up to the podium. There's a timer right in front of you. Halfway through, your timer will turn color, and when you have one minute left, it's going to turn color again. At the six-minute mark, I will politely say thank you very much and stop your testimony. So please do keep it to six minutes. We have a long list today. We want to get through everybody and give everybody the time that they deserve to do I just want one other thing to remind folks that this is about the foundation aid formula. It is not a discussion about education policy. And I think that's critically important. What Rockefeller was asked to do is the foundation aid formula. So I'm going to call you up here. You're going to come up to the podium, and when you start, we'll start the timer. So David Little, Executive Director of the Rural Schools Association of New York State.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you all for being here. You've made it challenging for me. I'm colorblind. I won't be able to tell when that's up, and you've given me a microphone, and I can't tell people my middle name in six minutes. So I will not use notes and just kind of have a heart-to-heart with you. You've got my written testimony already. So I don't envy you. You've got two parallel state efforts happening at once. In a perfect world, the state of New York would have already figured out how it wants to educate the next generation and what its assessments and pathways and the professional development needed to effectuate a good result would be, and then they'd turn to you and they'd say, "How do we pay for that?" But you're asked to do that simultaneously. You've got two tracks going at the same time. So I think I want to focus on what's shared by both of those efforts, and that's regionalism. Regionalism obviously was supported in the state budget by increasing the merger and consolidation aid, and it was supported by the state education department in its requirement of BOCES to do a discussion all across the state about regional efforts. We have fallen short particularly in rural areas in trying to provide the kind of expanded programming necessary for success after high school. Everybody graduates from rural high schools. We've got the best graduation rates going in the state. The problem is what happens afterwards, where fully three-fourths of our high school graduates never get a credential beyond that high school diploma. That doesn't have to be, but the fact of the matter is that coursework that's provided, preparatory and advanced coursework that's provided, it's a pun, as a matter of course, in our suburban and our urban areas, rural kids have to pay for through remediation and community college and college work. And they never get to study what they want to study. By the time they get done with remediation, they've had enough. And the jobs they used to have to go home to their communities after the great outward migration during the Great Recession, those jobs simply don't exist for them anymore. And we owe them more than sitting in mom's basement playing Call of Duty. So if we're going to address that, fortunately, the state is perfectly primed to do with a couple of small adjustments, some things that can really help that circumstance. The first is to get a legitimate process for determining whether you want to have a merger and consolidation within your communities. Right now, we expect every community involved to have a positive vote before they've even seen the results of a study to tell them what the educational or financial implications are. That's deplorable. We need a vote by each Board of Education on the study, and then we need to have the study presented. And at the end of that, when the public's been educated, then we need a total vote of what would be the entirety of the community. We also need an incentivized program for the option, not the mandate. I want to be very clear, not the mandate, because we understand that rural schools are the very lifeblood of every aspect of their community. And I can tell you, there are studies, almost like an atomic bomb. What happens at ground zero when you remove that school? What happens at five miles? We don't want to do that. But regionalized high schools have been proven, in every one of our neighboring states, who by the way, outperform us academically, that when you get to the secondary level, you need to expand the curriculum so that everybody has those AP, dual enrollment, IB, all of those kind of coursework that make you successful. You have to be able to set those up, and they simply, our rural schools simply can't afford to do that right now. You can't have schools like Scarsdale and on the other end have schools that provide only the state-mandated curriculum and struggle to do that, and have a tax cap that gives you 50 grand a year with a bus mandate that costs half a million dollars a bus. Okay? So fortunately, New York State is perfectly primed to address this. You don't have to go more than 30 miles to get to a community college or a SUNY campus in our state. They're all hurting for students. They have space. They have faculty to provide these advanced courses for our students. We have a BOCES system that's already incentivized to do regionalized instruction and transportation. And by taking the high school faculty that already exist at whatever high schools might be involved, we can expand. You obviously don't need four chemistry teachers if there's four high schools, but you do need four science courses for students to be successful today. So you expand the curriculum by expanding the diversity of what's offered through the staff that would transfer to the regional high school. The only way that I can see that we reverse this trend, we are currently the second, we have the second-largest declining population in the United States right now, second only to Massachusetts. To bring people back despite our debt, despite our high taxes and our bureaucracy, that type of thing, we've got to educate our kids better and attract people because of what we offer them. We've always been known for that, and it's time for us to be able to do that again. The last thing I would suggest, I know the things, I'll just tick them off really quickly for you. The regional cost index has to be fixed, okay? It's inequitable. The sparsity factor depresses aid. You can be twice as poor as the poverty index allows for in our current formula. All of these things have to be done. And we need additional support for community schools because only by partnering in the community can we offer a future to our students that is better in New York than the outward migration that we've seen.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. You're going to correct me when you come up here, I hope. Robert...
Briden.
Briden?
Bridenstein.
Bridenstein?
Yes.
Robert Bridenstein, Executive Director of the New York State Association of Small City School Districts.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Institute and our guests, I'm Robert Bridenstein, and I am the Executive Director of the New York State Association of Small City School Districts. We represent 57 small city districts and educate nearly 250,000 students each and every day. We have districts all across New York State, and our mission is clear: to ensure that every student in these districts receives the constitutionally mandated, sound, basic education to guarantee their success as citizens and as professionals. We also seek to guarantee that the state properly funds districts to have access to critical resources to educate every child in order to achieve this constitutional standard. We advocate establishing the formula that is deeply rooted in rigor, relevance, and provides for those necessary resources. For the past 16 years since the foundation aid formula was implemented, albeit with good intentions, New York State has dramatically missed the mark. As an association, it is our primary objective to dedicate advocacy representing the unique interests and challenges of these 250,000 students in 57 very different systems. And as a natural consequence of our advocacy, this will positively affect every child, every system, every classroom, and every region in New York State. Although our districts across the state are diverse, we share a common balance of finding successful, successful, successful solutions to the hurdles in funding, resources, and educational outcomes. Our vision is a system that equitably distributes resources for students regardless of their economic status, district size, and achieve a high-quality education throughout the state. Specifically with the foundation aid formula as it currently stands, it is not only outdated, but it has been politically manipulated to a degree, and it no longer resembles itself as it was originally offered as a solution to correct the state's constitutional requirement in the legal case in New York City, the Campaign for Fiscal Equity. Our entire generation of students over the past 16 years have spent their entire public education career in a system that has not funded the necessary requirements to improve education and meet these objectives. A sound, basic education should be the foundation and bedrock of the work of the Institute to correcting the foundation aid formula. Our world, as we know, has dramatically changed, but the formula upon which we base all educational decisions on has not. This gap in funding is in part a bureaucratic oversight caused by Albany that impacts each and every community. It is a critical lapse in our state's duty to its young citizens, and we must seize this opportunity with the support of data, with the wisdom of the Rockefeller Institute, and comments from the field to take this as an opportunity for generational change to fix the formula. We must fix the formula to free it from the winds of political change and forever open the doors of opportunity for every child in New York State, for every generation that comes after this decision. A sound, basic education in the state must provide adequate resources for a meaningful education, and such preparation must include access to qualified teachers, adequate facilities, and essential learning materials in order to set up students for their future roles as citizens in our great state. All of these must be factored into the foundation aid formula. Currently, the cost to provide a sound, basic education is not met, particularly in our 57 small-city school districts, but also in rural, suburban, and urban communities. There is an urgent sense of a need to change the formula. When it was first originally impacted and begun, it was based on the successful school models emphasizing bottom-line spending and ignoring professional judgment inputs. We, along with other statewide organizations, call for the comprehensive costing-out study to address these shortcomings. The foundation aid formula was determined that the successful school models, which now no longer meet that criteria, still continue to be the basis in which foundation aid formula is measured. That must change. Moreover, the formula must be freed from political whims that occur in Albany or during election years, such as the CPI adjustment that was arbitrarily substituted. This caused tremendous disconcerting anxiety in the field and impacted education. The foundation aid formula, in summary, must include these four, three attributes, excuse me. We must remove the political influences from the funding decisions by creating a transparent and reliable funding formula for every single system in the state. We must ensure predictability and consistency in funding allocations so the districts can commit to long-range funding, planning, both within the educational community and within their own communities, that they know their needs best. And we must recognize and adequately fund schools according to their regional needs as well as their local capacity and their demographic diversity. Models from states like New Jersey and Kansas have successfully reformed their educational funding structures and should guide our reforms. As I conclude, I would encourage the Institute and the elected officials to embrace this opportunity, fix the formula fully. Small-city schools will be there with you every step of the way to make sure we get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alyssa Hardy, President of the Bainbridge-Gilford Teachers Association. And are you bringing, you're doing it together?
Well, we are each one.
Okay, yeah, yeah, come on. And Erin Wurley, President of the Deposit Teachers Association.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Hardy. I teach art at Bainbridge-Gilford, a small rural district about 30 minutes from here. We love our students. We're always looking for ways to make it work. I think we do a pretty good job, but having proper funding would absolutely help our students. In a rural district like ours, we naturally have more students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds who come in needing extra support. This has increased in the past several years, and we need more interventions to help close the widening gap that often separates them from their peers in wealthier districts. I'll briefly touch on three areas that would benefit from better funding. First is the physical space at our district. Our classroom spaces vary in quality, but increased funding would help us bring us all into the 21st century. We don't have actual walls between many of our elementary classrooms, just temporary walls that separate a large room into quadrants, so this severely limits both teaching and learning due to the noise levels, but also brings up major safety concerns. Our high school science labs have furniture that is rotted or falling apart but can't afford to be replaced. There are safety issues with securing equipment and chemicals, but those upgrades cost money. We request new equipment, but again and again, they're bumped off the list behind other priorities, and we're told to ask again next year. Both elementary schools and our art and technology building at the high school lack air conditioning. This used to not be a big deal, but in the past few years, it's gotten worse. Many classroom temperatures near 90 degrees this May and June, and we had no ability to cool them down. Students, especially the little ones, are regularly sent home sick during this time due to vomiting because of overheating, and I've been sent pictures of crayons that have literally melted in those buildings. Second is academic. We're losing vital academic support roles such as response to intervention, also called RTI. Over 25% of students at our elementary school qualify for Tier 2 or Tier 3 math intervention, and our data proves that the services work. Yet we had just one individual in this role, and the position was recently cut due to lack of funding. Another example is in our special education department. Our 11 special ed teachers do their best but are spread very thin, making it difficult to provide the necessary amount of time for each student, since those students often need more involved supports and interventions than they used to. And with regard to mental health, we have an increase in students who require counseling and other mental health services, and there's not enough time in the day to provide those services. Students today are coming to us with more severe traumas than they used to, and families are dealing with complex issues like unstable housing and drug use. Staffing more counselors and social workers across the district would help us better serve our students. These are just a few ways that the current outdated foundation aid formula prevents our schools from reaching their full potential. By updating that formula, it would have an immediate positive impact on both teaching and learning. Students at Bainbridge-Gilford and across New York State deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Erin Wurley. I'm a teacher of 29 years for a very rural school district, Deposit Central School District, which has 548 students pre-K through 12th. Let me explain to you by what I mean by rural. The families in our community need to drive 35-plus miles for work, for medical care, for a choice in grocery stores, for entertainment, et cetera. Our internet and cell service is spotty at best. There is no public transportation, so if you do not own a car, your choices for employment, shopping, anything else are extremely limited. 58% of our families live below the poverty level. Because of these circumstances, the school is so much more than just a school. It's a lifeline for our students and community. We hold monthly food banks that benefit over 50% of our families. We provide dental, medical, and mental health services. We provide prom attire for students that can't afford it or don't have the means to go shopping for it. We have paid for students' class rings and their senior trips so their circumstances don't limit the joys of graduation. We provide field trips and enrichment activities that they'd never get otherwise. We help students find employment and take them to interviews. The impact of these additional experiences is enormous for our district. This year, I took a group of special education boys to the Museum of the Earth in Etica, New York. We had been studying the dinosaur legends of Nessie, Champ, and Chessie. We read the myths, we theorized about what the creatures could be, we wrote our own legends, and then we went to the experts. For weeks, these boys came to school every day and asked about the trip, afraid they were going to miss it. On the day of the trip, the boys were all in their glory, and they learned so much. Afterwards, we stopped at McDonald's for lunch. The following day, I asked them what they thought and what they had learned. What I learned was that this was the first time they had ever been to a museum or eaten at a McDonald's restaurant. Can you imagine being 13 years old and it's the first time you've been to a museum or eaten at a McDonald's? We've also taken students to New York City to see shows on Broadway. I recently had a student who graduated several years ago reach out to me, saying how much of an impact this trip made on their life, and that it was the only time they've ever been able to travel to the city or see a Broadway show. Transporting these students to these kinds of cultural events is an additional cost amplified by our district's size and location. When we can't provide in-person experiences, we have to bring the resources to them. Because of our geographic isolation, this costs much, much more for schools with sparse populations and high poverty levels, even if the land wealth is high. Even our rural setting, we have seen an increase in our ELL population. Recently, our school jumped from 0% to 2% in one school year. We do not have the funding or the resources to adequately train teachers to be able to communicate with these students or their parents or for them to learn successfully. I urge you to do what is right for the students, who are at a greater need for resources due to their rural isolation. They shouldn't be punished or overlooked just because of where they are living. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Avery, Deputy Superintendent of Cigo Northern Catskill ONC BOCES.
Good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Avery, the Deputy Superintendent of ONC BOCES. I thank you for making Lawrence Central School an ONC BOCES regional district a stop on your tour of the state to hear about the realities facing rural schools. Today, I'm honored to represent the Association of School Business Officials of New York. I've been fortunate to serve as their president, and I'm currently serving as their Chair of the Government Relations Committee. During my 25-year career, I've gained experience working in schools from Long Island to Cataragus County, and am among the few who remember the transition from operating aid to foundation aid formula. We celebrated the work because the formula was believed to be fair, equitable, and predictable. Since that time, we've seen the impact of economic downturns, inequitable funding schedules, changes to education requirements, the impact of the property tax cap, and increasing push to make schools community centers with responsibilities for safety, nutrition, mental health resources, and more. Due to these significant changes, it's time to study this extremely important tool for funding our schools. I urge the Institute to dig deeper into the analysis of what a successful educational program looks like for schools across our state and re-figure the base foundation amount to include the full range of expenses required to ensure every student can meet the new graduation requirements. I also encourage you to study the factors within the Pupil Needs Index to ensure the form- to ensure the formula captures the appropriate weighting for students of poverty and that we have the most up-to-date information about the percentages of students that fall under the poverty line. What additional resources does it take a district to ensure their population of students with more than 60% living in poverty have equal access to educational opportunities as their friends in schools with less than 10%? A serious look at the cost of sparsity is also of critical importance. We've yet to capture the true additional costs of the particular issues facing our most rural schools. The average student per square mile in this BOCES region is four. The sparsity indicator in the current formula is 25 students per square mile. Until you spend a day trying to schedule our very few school psychologists over 1,660 square miles, you can't fully understand the true hardships of just getting there and providing the service. In addition, I cannot accept the funding for our special education services as adequate. If the Foundation Aid Formula will continue to be the first line of funding, the weighting matrix must be reevaluated. Perhaps the answer is to reevaluate whether it's even most appropriately placed in the Foundation Aid Formula. I would be remiss if I did not also address the Income Wealth Index as part of the calculation expected for the expected local contribution. The factor is intended to capture the income of a community compared to the average. Unfortunately, the Income Wealth Index is capped at the lower amount at .655 and the upper at two. Among our 19-component schools in this region alone, 12 have IWIs that are lower than .655. Not a single one has one greater than two. While talking about local contribution, I'll mention the property tax cap legislation was implemented long after the Foundation Aid Formula was introduced. In days before the cap, if a school district had a significant increase in property value, it could leverage that change to increase the tax levy while maintaining low increases in tax rate, therefore offsetting any impact of an increased CWR in their school aid formulas. This is no longer the case. No one will be surprised when I note that rural schools across the state are declining in enrollment. I've heard the rationale for reducing the aid going to schools with fewer students. I understand how a general person might make, think that makes sense. But I know those with more understanding of school operations should be wary of such a simplistic approach. When a district with enrollment of 400 students has 60 students move away over the next six years, that's 10 students in 13 grades. That may be a 15% loss in enrollment, but they cannot sustain a 15% reduction in aid. Since I only have two minutes left, I'm going to mention that I am also a taxpayer and a parent. I have an incoming first grader to the Cooperstown Central School District. She's going into first grade this fall. Cooperstown might be famous for all kinds of things: baseball, the arts, medicine, glimmer glass, but it serves around 800 students K-12. If that sounds small to you, know that it's our second-largest school district in this region. And so I'm concerned about the opportunities for her and her classmates. What paths are we giving school leaders to combat the issues so they can make regional efficiencies? What is the state planning to do to ensure that we're reducing, not enhancing, the barriers to opportunities for rural school students? At this moment, I don't see those tools in our toolkit. Therefore, I encourage the Institute to take a hard look at the value of safe harmless policy until there are legislative changes to give school leaders and their students more pathways to success. By investing in education, we're investing in our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rick Tims, Executive Director of the Statewide School Finance Consortium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rick Tims. I'm the Executive Director of the Statewide School Finance Consortium, a consortium of almost 400 school districts in various regions of upstate New York. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and for all your efforts to hold these sessions to learn how the Foundation Aid Formula affects school districts and how it can be improved. Our organization is really interested in four things: equity, adequacy, predictability, and sustainability. We need a further development or equitable distribution of funds among school districts based on adequate representations of fiscal capacity and poverty, as well as the demographics of students and their population relative to the educational mission. We need an adequacy of funds within the formula based on the actual cost of education for each school district. And we need a definite phase-in plan, because I don't think this is going to be achieved all at once, over the next few years for an improved Foundation Aid Formula to accomplish the equity and adequacy. And of course, what we need is a sound financial plan to sustain, evaluate, and improve state aid for school districts across the state. Now, I'm not going to dwell on some of the things that have been said in previous sessions, so I'm going to try and hit some highlights so we don't get too redundant. The first thing I want to point out is the Foundation Aid regarding safe harmless school districts. Any diminishment of safe harmless funds would financially be catastrophic over the 300 school districts if you even withdraw it over a five-year period. I've attached a spreadsheet that shows you all the school districts that would be affected and how much they would lose. It would be seriously financially catastrophic, but it would also be culturally catastrophic. And I believe we would end up with educational insolvency before we hit financial insolvency. Students would lose out, communities would lose out. We are here in Lawrence Central School District, a safe harmless school district right now. They are almost $602,000 into safe harmless, and potentially that amount would be growing. If this amount were reduced, and all things being equal, over a five-year period, they would lose at least about $120,000 each year. I look at it as two teachers per year for five years. If the safe harmless were reduced in three years, they would lose over $200,000 each year. I look at it as three teachers and other instructional support staff for each of three years. And to make matters worse, ignoring the ability of any school district to alter their structures in any meaningful way without massive educational, financial, and political upheaval is simply absurd. The next thing we have to look at is the adjusted Foundation Aid amount, the first number in the formula. It came out of nowhere. I watched when it was devised. It was artificially created, and it does not accomplish the needs of the school district. And I don't even want to get into where the 2.8% inflation factor that was made up this year. What we really need is a costing-out formula. The costs have changed. Our mission has changed. We've got to take a look at this. School district costs are increasing greater than inflation. We are competing for the same people in many areas for the same ideas, and we have a constitutional test. So we've got to be careful. You already know about the Regional Cost Index. No further discussion needed. You also know the weighting for, we'll say, FERPLE or Direct Certification, Sensus, SAFE, ELL, Students with Disabilities and Sparsity Formula need to be increased. The calculation of the CWR basing an average simply by adding New York City to a state average is ridiculous. Right now, everybody lost BOCES aid, building aid, and transportation aid because of loss of property values in New York City. It is, if you have a trout stream near you, exempt properties, picturesque views, second residences, you're in trouble. We need more accurate, accurate measures of poverty and regional costs, which you've heard before. And I think we've got to get rid of this community-school set of size. This should be unrestricted aid. Foundation aid should be unrestricted. That's why we have Board of Educations. As been mentioned just earlier, the IWA calculation is ridiculous. A floor of .65 actually makes poorer districts look wealthier. And using the 2.0 ceiling is the antithesis of equity. So that should be actually removed. The sparsity factor is a major problem here. If you take a look at some data I provided, you have a numerator using the number 25 and a denominator using the number 50.9. It cuts the ability of rural schools to survive in the PNI and helps them in no way. I've spent decades looking at this thing, and so far, here's what I've come up with. There's no correlation between the square miles enrolled per student, the EN count, or the EN percent that makes sense. Having a denominator so large diminishes the count. Lowering the denominator would certainly help out. However, there's still no correlation between the variables and the sparsity index. Simply, 314 districts of less than 1,200 kids are suffering dramatically because of this inadequacy, especially rural schools. The local tax factor is a made-up number. We should be using tax on trues as currently as possible. The using of the 2003-2008 Need Resource category is ridiculous. It's too old. And I must submit that the state sharing aid ratios simply reconstitutes the shares agreement from the 1980s, eliminates all the demographics, all the things we know about kids, all the things we're supposed to do for schools, and simply uses income and wealth measures, and simply abandons the entire formula in front of it. So therefore, I'd suggest that, I've got some data in there for you to take a look at. I think we've got to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. And I serve at the ready if you need any additional information. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Terry Jo Snyder, Superintendent of the Cherry Valley Springfield Central School District.
Good afternoon. I am the Terry Jo Snyder, this proud Superintendent of Cherry Valley Springfield Central School, enrollment of 452 learners for a pre-K-12 building. I thank you for making Lawrence a stop on your tour of the state to hear about the realities facing schools. I speak today on behalf of my school district and the 19-component school districts that make up the ONC BOCES. Thank you for considering the specific challenges faced by rural schools like ours. Since the inception of the New York State Foundation Aid Formula, our schools have faced increasing financial demands as we work to respond to heightening expectations for programs and services to meet the needs of our learners. We are focused on issues of regionalization, collaborative services and opportunities, workforce development, college and career connections, in alignment with the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission. Today, I want to speak about free and reduced lunch price program, FERPLE, which is a key component of the Foundation Aid Formula used to determine funding for our schools. Specifically, the formula uses a three-year average of the FERPLE percentage for grades K-6, multiplied times .65 to calculate funding. Our district annually reaches out to families each September to complete the FERPLE forms. These forms request information about household members' income and who they are. In addition, we receive data from the Direct Certification Matching Process, which includes families receiving SNAP and Medicaid benefits. Accurate FERPLE data relies on both these submitted forms and direct certification data. However, in recent years, many schools, including ours, have participated in Community Eligibility Provision, CEP. Under CEP, all students receive free breakfast and lunch, and schools are relieved from collecting household applications for FERPLE. As a result, we are seeing a significant decrease in the return rate of the FERPLE forms, which are crucial for capturing the complete picture of eligibility beyond those directly certified. This shift has led into inaccuracies in the FERPLE data used in the Foundation Aid Formula. As if the decrease in the form submissions means that our FERPLE data is no longer accurate and does not reflect our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch meals. This, in turn, attempt affects the funding received under the current formula. We need to address this issue to ensure that the Foundation Aid formally accurately represents the needs of CEP schools like ours. I ask you to continue to evaluate how education and all associated needs and mandates are funded. The free and reduced lunch program is only one of those components, but it is essential to the conversation. By investing in it, we are investing in our children's future. I'd like to take a moment to address the impact of the Foundation Formula on my district, particularly in light of the government's recent proposal to eliminate hold-harmless provisions. Without this protection, my district would have faced a 14.7% reduction in Foundation Aid, which is a significant reduction. The current Foundation Formula's reliance on enrollment figures to determine school aid is problematic for districts experiencing declining enrollment. My district, like many others, depends heavily on state aid to maintain our budget and deliver a quality education. In 2008, our district served about 600 learners with three sections per grade level in the elementary and four teachers per course subject in the secondary. As enrollment has declined, we've had to reduce staffing, resulting in two sections per grade level in the elementary and three teachers per course subject in the secondary. When I arrived in CVS in 2016, our pre-K enrollment was 506 learners. We finished this past school year with 452 learners. This has declined to approximately 54 students over eight years. It's significant. Yet, we cannot further reduce our staffing to accommodate this drop without severely impacting the quality of education that we provide. We must maintain our staffing levels to offer the same support and service to our students who have increasing academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs. In summary, using enrollment as a sole predictor for Foundation Aid is too simplistic and doesn't account for the complexities of maintaining educational quality in districts with declining enrollment. The formula needs to be, reflect the broader needs of our students and the realities of operating schools in these challenging conditions. Thank you for letting me share my concerns.
Thank you very much. Ed Firsch, President of the Board of Education for the Roxbury Central School District.
My name is Ed Firsch. I represent the Roxbury Central School Board of Education, where I've served for the past 24 years. I would like to address one specific variable that's used in determining Foundation Aid, the combined wealth ratio, which combines property values and gross income. I submit to you today that the present combined wealth ratio is flawed and needs to be replaced. I say that for two reasons. First, property value and gross income have no relation to the lives being lived by the students in our school. Second, the tax cap has made the combined wealth ratio largely irrelevant, excuse me, because of the limited places on our ability to raise revenue through property taxes. I was first elected to the Roxbury Central School Board of Education in 2000. In the first budget I helped to prepare, our state aid was based on a combined wealth ratio of 1.08, which is slightly above the state average of 1. In the same year, the USDA said that 28% of our students qualified for free or reduced meals. In preparing our budget for this year, our combined wealth ratio was 1.528. At the same time, 42% of our students qualify for free or reduced meals. This is enough for us to participate in the USDA's Community Eligibility Provision and provide free meals to retire student body. New York State says that our community has increased in wealth over the past 24 years. Our combined wealth ratio has gone from 1.08 to 1.528. This is a significant increase. Over the same 24-year period, the USDA says that the percent of our students who live in poverty has increased from 28 to 42. This is also a significant increase. How can the Roxbury Central School see both wealth and poverty go up? In my time on the board, it wasn't my fault. The simple explanation is that Roxbury, like many rural areas in the state, has seen its economy change from one based on agriculture to one based on tourism. This has brought a spike in property values as many of the vacationers purchase homes or purchase property on which to build vacation homes. Many of these individuals then claim Roxbury as their primary residence, even though they do not live here full-time. In recent years, we have also seen homes purchased solely for the income they can produce as short-term rentals. Over the last 24 years, both the property value and the apparent income of our residents has increased. These are the only two factors used in determining the combined wealth ratio. So ours has gone up. And the increase in second homeownership and property values was well underway before 2000. In fact, if you go back to 1993, Roxbury's combined wealth ratio was 0.695. As property values have increased, the availability of well-paying jobs for those who actually live here did not. In fact, it probably decreased. These high property values meant[1706.22] These high property values meant that only those with substantial assets could afford to buy property in Roxbury. Most of them are not sending their children to our school. At the same time, many residents needed to move away as they could no longer afford to live here. The result is that our student population has declined, and our poverty level of our students has increased. According to the state education's prime on state aid, and I quote, "School districts serving concentrations of children from poverty backgrounds have a greater educational burden to bear, resulting in a greater need to fund programs that provide extra time and help to educate students, thus increasing educational costs," end quote. Roxbury has a high concentration of children from poverty backgrounds. We provide extra time and resources to these children. Thus, we have increased educational costs. The Foundation Aid Formula, using the combined wealth ratio, says we are a wealthy community and that we can raise sufficient funds from our local taxpayers. So, New York State does not provide us with the extra resources we need to meet the needs of our students. Meanwhile, the tax cap essentially prevents us from increasing our property taxes to meet the needs. This is not a problem unique to Roxbury. I know you can't change the tax cap. So, I'm asking to replace the combined wealth ratio with something that more accurately measures a community's ability to raise revenue locally. The results of a formula are dependent on the accuracy of the variables plugged into the formula. When inaccurate data are used in a formula, the result will, by necessity, be inaccurate. If you are building a bridge, or an airplane, or a rocket to go to the moon, such an error will likely be catastrophic. The bridge will collapse, the plane will crash, the rocket will fail to get off the launch pad. If you are providing funds for the education of children, inaccurate variables can also be catastrophic. Children will not receive the educational opportunities to which they are entitled. They will not gain the skills they need to be productive members of society. The combined wealth ratio for Foundation Aid is an inaccurate variable in the Foundation Aid Formula, so the results of the formula are inaccurate. In order to be accurate, any calculation of the wealth of a district must include the percent of students who live in poverty. There are lots of parts in the Foundation Aid Formula, and poverty count is included in other place, but the way in which poverty is presently factored into the formula does not give enough weight to the needs of children in our schools who come from poverty backgrounds. The way to fix that is to include poverty as a factor directly in the combined wealth ratio. The state's responsibility is to provide each and every student with the resources they need in order to become successful members of our democratic society. The Foundation Aid Formula is supposed to ensure that districts have the funds necessary to meet the educational needs of their students. It doesn't. The reason it doesn't is that the combined wealth ratio is an inaccurate measure of a district's wealth. This can be corrected by adding a poverty index to the combined wealth ratio. I thank you for your time today and the work you are doing to update the Foundation Aid Formula, so every still district will have the funds they need to meet the needs of their students, and thus the state will need to meet the needs of the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Ruffo, President of the New York State School Boards Association and a board member of Broom Tyoga BOCs.
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy Ruffo, currently serving as the President of the New York State School Boards Association, which represents over 5,000 public school board members from 678 rural suburban and urban districts, 37 BOCs, and 2.4 million students. I also currently serve as President of the Broom Tyoga BOCs Board and a former president and member of the Susquehanna Valley Board of Education. I thank you for this opportunity to provide input. As school board members, school budget development is one of the fundamental functions we have, ensuring that all decisions are based on the needs of the students, being educationally sound and fiscally responsible. We look to predictability in our fiscal resources to allow us to do long-range planning. Over the past 40 years that I've served as a board member, I have witnessed the evolution of achieving a Foundation Aid Formula intended to fund a sound basic education for each and every student, hailed as a marked improvement from the 30 or so separate formulas it replaced. It's sporadic implementation related to, among others, a recession, a global pandemic, to interventions by Governor Spitzer, and finally Governor Hochul to achieve full funding. I thank you for all your efforts to gather input and making recommendations for modifications. As this is the fourth hearing you are holding, I believe the issues our districts are dealing with have been clearly articulated, and those areas that are felt in need of adjustment, whether it's an updated data is needed, or adjustments to student waiting need to be made to be more reflective of the students we serve, or determining if the base Foundation Aid amounts is reflective of what it costs to educate an average student, this work remains your charge. Factors beyond the scope of this work, but what speaks of our needs to see adjustments in our largest source of funding include the tax levy limit cap, supermajority votes, reserve fund limitations of unassigned fund balance, and collective bargaining obligations, which make the restructuring of the Foundation Aid Formula so critical. Although the size and demographics may differ, our obligations to educate all our students remain the same. When money is being allocated as the budget development process transpires, the legislative tinkering that happens to adjust special circumstances of particular district happens with unpredictability and uncertainty. When carve-outs from the Foundation Aid allotments are made, it diminishes the funds needed most relevant for our students. The allocated time to approve, improve the formula is universally felt to be insufficient to do an adequate deep dive and be comprehensive to fix the formula, although this is in no way a criticism of the work you have been assigned. And this afternoon, it was even referenced as magical, and I hadn't heard that reference to it, but that's interesting. The efforts our undertaking, however, to gather input is commendable. Predictability, flexibility, accountability, adequacy, and equitable distribution are foundational to us performing our obligation. Every district has its own story, which speaks of the reasons for revisions. We really cannot wait another 17 years for a formula to meet the needs of the current student population. This will shortchange an entire generation of students, in spite of New York State spending the most per pupil in the country. I'd like to reference my home rural district, Susquehanna Valley, located in the southern tier near the Pennsylvania border. Not dissimilar from the majority of districts in the state, our district has lost population over the past three decades related to multiple factors, including an aging population. As referenced by others, these students didn't all come from the same grade level, having the same educational needs, the same economic backgrounds, and more. Unique to this district, however, were two catastrophic floods in 2006 and 2011, destroying homes and other buildings, leaving many parcels uninhabitable and never to be rebuilt. It resulted in the loss of student population, as well as a loss of taxable properties. It is myopic to equate fewer students with less cost, pointing to a clear lack of understanding of this formula and the students it serves. Residents who could afford to move to areas and other districts not prone to flooding did so, and home value plummeted. This resulted in an increase in the percentage of students who came from impoverished households. The cost of educating students has increased. For example, the number of mandates providing academic intervention services necessitates the hiring of additional staff without those students counting in the number of special education services. More students in the building require the support of special education services and aides and BOC services to meet student needs. We know the impact of mental health services with no additional funding. We hire few new teachers, so those experienced educators we have are more costly to employ. The SV district struggles with chronic absenteeism, as others have articulated. Replacing average daily enrollment as opposed to average daily attendance in the formula would be a better modifier. Neither the Foundation Aid Formula nor the tax cap considers increases in minimum wage and the impacts they have on districts. The challenge is allocating money so that making changes that can positively address concerns in one area will not result in taking resources from another is key to any modifications. I thank you for your thoughtful attention.
Thank you. Tarkin Chang, Superintendent of the Jefferson Central School District.
Good afternoon. I want to start by thanking the Rockefeller Institute for welcoming all these voices, and thank all the participants for being the voices of your community. I stand here before you today as a superintendent of Jefferson Central School District, a rural school in Skahery County with an enrollment of just under 150 students, to emphasize the critical importance of Foundation Aid for our rural schools. In our small, close-knit community, our school is more than just a place of learning. It is the heart of the town, fostering future leaders, providing essential services, and being a source of pride and unity. The Foundation Aid we receive is not a luxury, it is a necessity. If Foundation Aid is reduced, it will directly translate to fewer teachers and cuts to essential programs. These programs include special education, extracurricular activities, and advanced courses, all of which are vital to a well-rounded education. Our students deserve the same opportunities as those in other areas. Without the additional support of Foundation Aid, we risk widening the achievement gap, limiting students from accessing their full potential, and stifling their dreams. Education is the great equalizer, and for our rural community, it is the key to breaking negative cycles such as poverty. Last year, our total budget was just over $7.7 million. The district is safe harmless for Foundation Aid, and we've received approximately $2.7 million. Thankfully, safe harmless was maintained, and we received the same amount for this current year. Unfortunately, according to the current formula, the district would generate just over $1 million in Foundation Aid. The difference is over $1.6 million, or 22% of our total budget. When reviewing the enrollment and poverty data for Jefferson Central School from 2007 to 2023, you can see that our enrollment declined during that time by 138 students, or 48%. That is less than nine students on average per year for a kindergarten through 12th grade district. During that time, student poverty increased to reach 60%. We are not a wealthy community. Our community does not have the means to make up for a $1.6 million gap. Maintaining full Foundation Aid is not just an investment in our schools, it is an investment in our community's future. It ensures that every child, regardless of their zip codes, has access to quality education and the opportunity to succeed. Maintaining Foundation Aid will help to protect our rural schools and provide the bright futures our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Place? Mark Place, is that working? Mark Place, Superintendent of the Middleburg Central School District.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Place. I serve as a superintendent of the Middleburg Central School District, which is located eight miles south of Cobus Hill and serves approximately 650 students. I am proud to be here today, as this is the place where my father and grandfather both graduated. A once-in-a-generation opportunity. That is how today's forum and the review of New York State's Foundation Aid Formula has been described. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts as you embark on this incredibly important work. You have heard testimony from many individuals over the course of the past three forums. Their observations and recommendations address many of the inequities of the current formula to better address the needs of today's students. I come before you today not with recommendations for subtle tweaks to the formula, but rather with two out-of-the-box recommendations that will redefine and simplify the Foundation Aid Formula so that it is easily understood and provides greater predictability. My written testimony includes a fully-prepared new draft formula, which, due to time constraints, I will not be able to go fully through with you in oral testimony, but it has been provided to you before. My first recommendation is to redefine the purpose of Foundation Aid. If you were to ask educational leaders throughout the state of New York to define the purpose of Foundation Aid, I am confident that you would not get a succinct and consistent definition. I would like to recommend that we redefine Foundation Aid as the aid necessary to staff the instructional program throughout the state of New York. This definition aligns well with our district-level budgetary process. When districts throughout New York State prepare their budgets, they are required to present the budget in three components: administrative, program, and capital. The program component is the portion of the budget that is focused on funding positions for teachers, teaching assistants, aides, school counselors, social workers, school psychologists, nurses, and principals. My second recommendation is a full-scale overhaul of the formula, truly starting from scratch with a focus on answering this question: What is the level of staffing required to deliver an equitable instructional program in every district throughout New York State? When we consider the diversity of students being served and the diversity of districts serving those students, we need to recreate a formula that calculates the level of staffing needed to implement an equitable instructional program. My recommendation is that our efforts be centered around defining and funding a model instructional program. This approach accomplishes two things. First, it acknowledges the reality of economies of scale, which you have heard from many of the presenters, and it addresses the mandated positions that all school districts are required to have. Exhibits 1 and 2 that was provided to you lay out the proposed basis for the staffing calculations. Let me be clear that this is my own work, and it is meant to be a starting point, not an endpoint. Positions, formulas, and rules were generated based on my own experience, and I expect that they will be modified with additional input. My proposal relies on just four primary points of data, easily gathered from the New York State Education Department: the number of buildings with beds codes, enrollments by grade level, enrollments of ENL students, and enrollments of special education students. Would this proposal actually work? The calculations were run for a total of nine districts, Exhibits 3 through 11 that were presented to you. These districts were selected because of my personal familiarity with them, and the draft calculation had a variance of just 3.3% from the actual values that were reported to the New York State Department of Education in the 2223 school year. I believe that with only minor modifications and updated data on special education enrollments, this proposed calculation could align very well and serve as a basis for our new Foundation Aid Formula. Once the model instructional program is finalized and is able to generate consistent staffing counts, our efforts need to turn to simplifying the actual formula so that it can be easily understood by the field and the public. Exhibit 12 is my best attempt at demonstrating how this could be done. Exhibit 12 is a fully-prepared draft Foundation Aid Formula for the 2526 school year, using the data from Exhibits 3 through 11, along with a hypothetical staffing runs for the 2324 school year, and a hypothetical 2.6% increase in state aid. The output follows the format of this current state aid runs, and it includes the mathematical formulas to derive each value. After working on this proposal and underlying formulas for several weeks, it has become clear to me that it is impossible to generate a new Foundation Aid Formula that it can address the past inequities and, at the same time, move the discussion forward. A recommendation from this body to implement cuts like those that were proposed this past spring will result in widespread pushback and likely dismantle any work put forward. My recommendation is that the 2425 Foundation Aid become the base moving forward. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today and to present some ideas that are outside of the box, which I think could help move the conversation forward. I look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Gonzalez, Superintendent of the Worcester Central School District.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Gonzalez, the proud superintendent of the Worcester Central School District, a small rural school with enrollment of 328 fantastic pre-K through 12th grade learners. I speak today on behalf of my district, the 19 component school districts that make up the ONC BOCs, as well as a member of the NISCUS Legislative Committee representing our greater region at large. First, I'd like to thank you for listening to and considering my testimony and the challenges faced by rural schools and school funding. Since the inception of the New York State Foundation Aid Formula, our schools have faced increasing financial demands as we work to respond to heightened expectations for programs and services to meet the many needs of our diverse learners. I can further attest that in my past 25-plus years in education, the expectations and responsibilities put on schools is like never before. My students come from a 61-square-mile rural area, of which poverty has increased, and currently 54% of my students live in poverty. In my district, like others around the state, we are doing far more for our students and families beyond the traditional academic basics. We have become a source of meals, social, emotional support after school and summer care, as well as a place for mental, medical, and dental services. And while it's no secret that rural schools are seeing a decline in enrollment, I have to say that I shudder when hearing the possibility that the new state aid formula may include a reduction in aid going to schools with fewer students. As our district depends on state aid for 64% of our budget, the latter is cause for concern. If we are dealing with widgets or units and not students, that would seem logical. However, I can't divide a student in half to fit a cost calculation analysis. I can't have a student not take chemistry, because this year we are five less high school students than last year, which results in less funds to pay teacher salaries. The regulations, requirements, and mandates don't change when you have a smaller population. For the upcoming 202425 school year, I anticipate a decline in student enrollment, starting with the year eight students lower than last year's beds day. That will be an approximate future reduction of $90,000 in aid. However, inflation will not decrease for goods and services, mandates will not change, and teacher and support staff salaries will still require negotiated raises. I worry that at some point, for example, when we are required to buy electric buses at $350,000 more than a current diesel bus, that I'll be forced to have to decide between student programs and meeting mandates with even less aid because of a loss of a handful of students. Conversely, this year, when our enrollment peaked at 344 students, there were no additional funds available to offset the unbudgeted services and programming necessary to educate those new students. We speak of diversity, inequity, and inclusion as pillars in our educational system, and I ask the institute, as you take on this important work of looking at school funding, please take into consideration the existing inequities that are present in our rural schools across the state. My colleagues and I in this region fight a daily battle to overcome the transcript poverty of our students. However, despite our most diligent efforts, we cannot match the diverse programs and academic opportunities of our neighboring suburban and urban school districts. That leaves our students' academic transcripts quite different and at times inferior to those of their peers across the state. As a result, I strongly encourage the institute to seek future funding for schools that will recognize and address the disparity, challenges, and the ebb and flow of rural schools so that it does not add to the inequity of the rural student, a student who is no less deserving of a robust educational experience just because of their just because of their geographic location. I would like to also offer the following areas for further investigation that could assist all schools. First, the Income Wealth Index, which we've spoken about. It should be reevaluated. While its intent is to capture the income of a community compared to the average, it currently is capped at the lower and upper ends of .655 and 2. I can confidently say that in our area, in our region, the majority of us have an Income Wealth Index much lower than .655, and I feel those caps should be removed. Second, there should be a mechanism to address the variations in enrollment. I would suggest part of the formula takes into consideration the changes of student enrollment within a school year, one that assists in real-time when districts have sudden increases in enrollment. This could be done by taking more consistent, perhaps monthly, accounting of enrolled students as opposed to a one-time snapshot that drives funding. I would also encourage the current hold harmless continue so that no districts are monetarily penalized if enrollment declines, as the education requirements for the remaining students never diminish. Third, I also ask the Institute to consider the current weighting of students in the formula for English-language learners and special education students. We are all seeing an increase in ELL students, and the requirements to assist those students have increased significantly since the original formula inception. The current formula weight of ELL students is .5, should be reexamined in order to provide adequate services for present-day ELL students. As mentioned, special education weights is another area to reconsider. I know I'm not alone in that our special education students and services have increased over the years. An example: One student who enrolls in our district can instantly add over $50,000 in expenses that is unbudgeted yet must be paid immediately to ensure the child gets the services and education they deserve. So any increase in the weighting of special education students would be welcomed. In conclusion, I humbly ask the Institute that you continue to carefully evaluate how education and all associated needs and mandates are funded. Every school leader wants to provide their students with the absolute best educational experience, one that will ensure student success now and into the future. I implore you to think of the funding and formula components not simply as numbers and calculations, but as the investment of the tens and thousands of amazing students across New York State. We need to ensure that whether we are a district of 300 or 3,000 students, a one-size-fits-all model is not the outcome. Future funding must have flexibility and security to meet the diversity of each district so that every student in New York receives an equitable education regardless of their demographics or geographics. I thank you again for this opportunity to speak to you today and very much appreciate your time and efforts in examining school funding.
Thank you very much. Jeremy Bellfield Superintendent of the Lafayette Central School District.
Good afternoon. I'm Jeremy Bellfield, and I'm the Superintendent for the Lafayette Central School District. I've had the honor and privilege of serving in Lafayette since July 1st of 2017. Lafayette is a small rural district serving 750 students, and we're located eight miles south of Syracuse. Lafayette has the honor and privilege of serving indigenous students from the Onondaga Nation, and we operate the Onondaga Nation School. I would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are a meeting on the ancestral and contemporary grounds of the Haudenosaunee. Thank you to Loren's Central School District for hosting today's event, and thank you to the Institute for providing this listening session on the vital topic of Foundation Aid. The New York State Constitution states as follows: "The legislature shall provide for the maintenance and support of a system of free common schools wherein all children of this state may be educated." Current law sets forth that the foundation amount shall reflect the average per pupil cost of general education instruction in successful school districts as determined by a statistical analysis of the costs of special education and general education in successful school districts, provided that the foundation amount shall be adjusted annually to reflect the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index. The promise of the 17-year-old funding formula was a great victory for schools in New York State. I commend those that were the original crafters of the formula. The impact of additional school funding has greatly benefited students, however, not all students. We've seen improvements in graduation outcomes for students. We've seen new educational opportunities where students can earn college credits, advanced courses, and provided richer educational opportunities for students. Increases in Foundation Aid in Lafayette resulted in Principal Susan Hart starting the Lafayette Big Picture School in 2008. This is a small school district, or a small school focused on personalized learning, internships, and college and career preparation. Big Picture students participate in internship experiences in local businesses, area nonprofits, and students take courses on campus at SUNY OCC. Lafayette maintains a high graduation rate thanks to innovative programs, the dedication of our staff, and the incredible efforts of our students and the support of family and community members. Lafayette relies heavily on state resources to provide opportunities for our students. And given the economic challenges that our families face, many rely on our school system to enact the promises outlined in our state constitution that offers all students, regardless of zip code, the chance to earn an equitable education. Lafayette borders two affluent, high-performing school districts, which could be considered the exemplars referenced in the Foundation Aid formula as successful schools. Both of these successful schools, due to their larger size, larger tax base, and larger receipts of state funding, offer comparatively more courses, such as advanced placement courses, business courses, computer science, and programming in the arts. Wouldn't it be great if the promise of equitable educational opportunities referenced in the Foundation Aid formula became a reality for all students, especially rural students living in minority communities that have been historically mistreated by our institutions? The reality is that economics drive a lot of what happens for our students. The Foundation Aid formula, number one, needs to be reflective of current data, and it should be updated to account for the true economic circumstances that exist in a school district and the costs of providing an education to students. Factors such as an improved regional cost index should be considered to help determine how aid should be distributed. The property tax cap did not exist when the original formula was introduced, and the state has not adequately investigated how this cap limit limits the local contribution referenced in the current Foundation Aid formula. Number two: School boards, school superintendents, and school business officials need school funding formulas to have predictability. Lafayette floats between being a save harmless district and a fully-funded district. Enrollment has changed between 725 students and upwards of 900 students in my seven years as a Superintendent. We need a way to make sure that we can provide equitable opportunities for students despite the unpredictability that enrollment changes can occur. Number three: Districts have taken on a considerable number of new roles and mandates related to school security, mental health, social and emotional learning, and providing more resources to families. Lafayette has had to hire social workers and not fill vacant science positions to address the mental health crisis. Special education costs are climbing, and the Foundation Aid formula needs to provide additional resources to meet those student needs. Number four: The state is undertaking a dramatic change to graduation requirements. And unfortunately, the Legislature has not afforded the Institute the necessary time to fully analyze the changes to the current formula or how changes in graduation requirements would impact school funding. Any recommendations should come with a caveat that the state should revisit the funding formula in a comprehensive manner on a more frequent basis. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration to these important issues. Our current and future students, thank you for their efforts on their behalf.
Thank you very much. Michelle Osterhout Superintendent of the Margaretville Central School District.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Osterhout, 25-year educator. I have proudly served as a teacher, vice-principal, principal, and am now the proud Superintendent of Margaretville Central School District, nestled in the beautiful Catskill Park with an enrollment of 330 learners, pre-K through 12. Thank you for making Loren's a stop on your tour of the state to hear about the realities facing our schools. I speak today on behalf of my school district and the other component school districts that make up ONC BOCs. I'm honored to speak to the specific challenges faced by rural schools like ours. Since the inception of the New York State Foundation Aid formula, our schools have faced increased financial demands as we work to respond to heightened expectations for programs and services to meet the needs of our learners. We are focused on issues of regionalization, collaborative services and opportunities, workforce development, college and career connections, alignment with the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission. Running a school of our size comes with unique challenges and added expenses. In a small rural district like Margaretville, our school serves as a vital community hub and solver of issues for our students and their families. Our school is often the central point for various services and activities, including healthcare, mental support, social services, and recreational activities. These roles extend beyond traditional education and are crucial for the well-being of our entire community. However, they also bring significant costs that are not always adequately covered by current funding formulas. Today, I want to speak about the critical need for appropriate weighting of English-language learners in the funding formula, access to opportunities for rural students, and how quality equity guides all that we strive to do for our learners. Our ELL students bring a rich diversity to our classrooms and communities, and it is vital that the funding formula reflects the additional resources they require to succeed. This includes specialized instruction, language support services, and cultural integration programs. By ensuring that ELL students are properly weighted in the aid formula, we can provide them with the tools they and their families need to overcome language barriers and achieve academic success. 30% of students at Margaretville Central School are Hispanic, and many of them are ELL learners. The increase in our ELL population has brought new challenges and significant costs. We've invested in specialized staff, training for our existing teachers, and resources to support the unique needs of these students. It is crucial that we address these needs adequately to provide an equitable education for all of our students. Therefore, I suggest the committee take a deep dive into the proper weighting for ELL within the Pupil Needs Index. Moreover, our rural students face unique challenges that often limit their access to the same opportunities available to students in more urban areas. These include advanced coursework, extracurricular activities, modern technology and infrastructure to support access to the internet. All of these things are crucial for preparing them for college and careers. The funding formula must address these disparities to ensure equity in education across the state. Additionally, providing a strength of schedule that meets the needs of all of our students is particularly challenging in a small district. We strive to offer a broad range of courses, but the limited resources and smaller student body sometimes make it difficult to maintain a robust curriculum. Furthermore, the current formula incorporates outdated data and statistics. For example, student poverty rates in each school district are currently measured based on data from the 2000 U.S. Census. And labor costs in the formula are based on information from 2007. These outdated metrics do not accurately reflect the current needs and costs associated with educating our students of today. Equity is a fundamental principle that must guide our funding decisions. Despite the remoteness of our location, our students deserve access to quality education in their programming. Every child, regardless of where they live, should have the opportunity to succeed and reach their full potential. Ensuring equitable funding for rural schools is essential to achieving this goal. I want to highlight the importance of predictability and sustainability in our funding. These are strong arguments for maintaining a save harmless provision. Predictable and sustainable funding allows us to plan effectively and ensure that we can continue to support all of our students, including our growing ELL population, without interruption. In conclusion, I ask that you continue to evaluate how education and all associated needs and mandates are funded. The proper weighting of ELL students and access to opportunities for all of our rural students are only two of these components, but they are essential to ensuring equity and crucial to the conversation. By investing in them, we are investing in our children's future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That now ends our first session. We're going to ask that folks exit the auditorium. The public part of the session will begin sharply at 5:30, and we will reopen the doors at 5 o'clock. We want to give the staff time to take a break and have something to eat. So thank you very much for coming, and thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Welcome to the fourth of five public hearings that we are having on the New York State Foundation Aid formula. My name is Anita Murphy. I previously served as the District Superintendent at Capital Region BOCs. I was a Superintendent in a rural district and worked in the large cities the majority of my career. Happy to be here. I'd like to introduce our panelists. So Bob Magna, who is the President of the Rockefeller Institute of Government; Bryan Backstrom, who is the Director of Education Policy at the Rockefeller Institute; and Dr. Lisa Partial. Lisa is a distinguished professor-- Sorry, Lisa-- distinguished professor of political science at Damon University and a Rockefeller Institute Fellow. Just a reminder, some housekeeping notes. The hearing is being livestreamed, and a recording of this meeting will be online shortly after this evening. Because we're being livestreamed, some of the audience members may be recognizable in the footage by staying in the auditorium. You are consenting to the possibility of being in the background of today's recordings. A couple other housekeeping notes. Today, we have an ASL interpreter with us to the right of the stage. Although we do not have simultaneous interpretation services on-site, a transcript of today's hearing will be translated into multiple languages and will be put on the Rockefeller Institute's website. If you have questions about the Foundation Aid study or about this hearing, or if you are in need of assistance, please talk to one of our wonderful staff members who are sitting out at the table and at the edges of the auditorium, and they would be happy to help you.[1662.33] to help you. Emergency exits are located to the back and to the side. Hopefully, we won't need them. And before we begin, I'm going to ask if everybody would please silence their cellphones. We want to make sure that the panel can hear everybody who's providing testimony tonight. And so if people would silence their cellphones, that would be great. A quick thank you, and I apologize for this afternoon. I did not have this. On behalf of the Rockefeller Institute, we would like to thank Superintendent Bill Doherty for all of their help here at Lawrence. This is not easy. It takes a lot of planning, and we are extraordinarily grateful for Lawrence' help and support in this process. And thank you for all for being here. We are very interested to hear what you have to say, and we appreciate the fact that you've taken your time to come out tonight in the rain and speak or listen to what folks have to say. Just some background and context. The purpose is to hear the voices of the New York State community on the Foundation Aid Formula for state education funding. As you know, in 2024-25, the budget called for the Rockefeller Institute to conduct a study to assess the state's Foundation Aid Funding Formula and discuss potential modifications to how the formula works. As a part of the study, the researchers at the Rockefeller Institute are collecting feedback from all of you and folks from across the state. I just want you to know that if you would like, and you're speaking tonight, and you would like to provide the written testimony of what you say, or if you don't have enough time, please provide feedback at the Rockefeller Institute of Government. It's right up on the screen, rockinstitute.org/FA. Feedback from both portions of the hearing this afternoon and tonight will be incorporated into the study and will use to inform the institute's final report. And I'm going to turn it over to Bob Magna to provide some introductory remarks about the Foundation Aid Formula and the study.
Thanks, Anita. Again, thank you all for being here. It was a wonderful trip down from Albany to be here today. And we're looking forward to hearing from folks. We had a lot of interesting testimony from folks this afternoon, and we're really looking forward to what folks have tonight. I will tell you, we've showed these before, that, you know, we have one more hearing left after this in Gilderland, which is, all of you know, the capital district. And we are also, again, to repeat what Anita said, use our written comment submission form if you have comments that you want us to include in the final report. And we will do our best to make sure all comments are included. This is the schedule that we're working through, and it's a very tight schedule. Again, it takes us from, you know, when the enacted budget happened, and I got a call the next day, to the end of, you know, to the beginning of December. So it is a tough time schedule. We have a lot to do. We have tried to reach out to as many folks as we could, and this is part of that process, but it's not the only part. So people have other opportunities to communicate with us. And we're here talking about this, which is the Foundation Aid Formula, which, you know, is not the easiest thing in the world to digest, but it's responsible for distributing billions of dollars to school districts across the state. And so it's, in many places, a little creaky and older and needs to be refined. And so we're here, you know, to hear from you about what your thoughts are on this subject. So you don't need to hear from me. We're here to hear from you. So let's get started. Brian? Brian?
Just to introduce, I'm Bryan Backstrom. I'm the Director of Education Policy Studies for the Rockefeller Institute of Government. Thanks again.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Lisa Partial. I am a professor at Damon University, which is in Amherst, New York, which is out in the western part of the state.
Thank you. So for tonight's portion, speakers are going to have two minutes, and you will excuse me upfront. I will stop you after two minutes. We want this to be fair across the state. And we're going to ask you to come in groups of one to five, and then I'll stop and I'll say, six to 10, come up. You'll come to the microphone. There is a clock, a timer, right in front of you at the halfway mark. It's going to turn color, and then when you have 30 seconds left, it's going to turn color again. And then I'm going to put my microphone and say thank you at the two-minute mark. So can I have speakers one to five? While you're getting up and doing that, when folks speak, can they please tell us who you are and where you're from? And that's very helpful to us. So speakers one to five. You can go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bill Doherty, the Superintendent of the Lawrence Central School District. I'd like to thank the Rockefeller Institute for making our district a host site for one of your statewide forums on the Foundation Aid Formula. I speak today on behalf of my school district, of which I am a proud 1991 alumnus and the 19-component school districts that make up the ONC BOCES region. Thank you for considering the specific challenges faced by rural schools like ours, which my colleagues have eloquently spoken about in the first part of the hearing. Today, I want to speak about one specific part of the current Foundation Aid Formula, the Income Wealth Index. Part of the current Foundation Aid Formula is a calculation of the expected local contribution using the IWI. This is the ratio of a district's adjusted gross income per pupil to the statewide average. For example, an income wealth index of two would mean that this district has an adjusted gross income that is twice the state average, and therefore, that district would be expected to contribute twice as much as the average school district. This would seemingly be a logical and fair method of calculating local contribution, but there are limitations on the Income Wealth Index that are problematic. The formula limits the maximum IWI to two and the minimum IWI to .655. These are artificially created floors and ceilings and limits the ability to truly compare communities' abilities to pay. A district like Lawrence, for instance, who has an IWI of .486 in the 2024-25 Foundation Aid projections, is treated the same as a district with an IWI of .655, which makes poorer districts look richer. Conversely, a district with an IWI of three is treated the same as a district with an IWI of two, which makes the wealthiest district seem poorer. Mr. First from Roxbury Central School hit the nail on the head when he talked about the impact of vacation and rental home purchases on the perceived wealth of the districts in our region as a product of the rise of travel and tourism as its primary economic driver. While it may look as if our district wealth is increasing, I can assure you that the wealth of the families or the students that are sending students to our districts is not. To truly capture the community's ability to pay the expected local contribution, the floor and ceiling should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Bridget Collins. I'm the proud superintendent of Andy's Central School District. Andy's is a very small, very small hamlet in the heart of the Catskills. Last year, our enrollment was 82 students pre-K to 12. We are optimistic about the growth in our enrollment due to younger families moving into Andy's. But what we're very proud of, more than anything, is that we sell out all of our events at Andy's due to the attendance by our elderly alumni in our community, making the school, as has mentioned before, in our rural district, very much the heart and soul of the community. I would like to say that while we are one of the smallest in the state, like other rural districts, we are, what we like to say, a small school with a big impact. I like to say also that we're a small school with a big heart. It's my first year as superintendent there, and I can attest to you that the school is certainly the heart of the community. Thank you for making Lawrence a stop on your tour of the state to hear about the realities facing schools. I too speak today on behalf of my own school district and the 19-component school districts that make up the ONC BOCES region. Thank you for considering the specific challenges faced by rural districts like ours. Today, I want to speak about the curricular demands on schools since the inception of the Foundation Aid Formula. In addition to the rollout of the new or next-generation standards and the new aligned assessments in core content areas, the science of reading, which has been much talked about, serves as an example of an initiative that will require schools to incur additional expenses for aligned and curriculum materials.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, everybody, you can submit your written testimony, your reading. Please submit it online as written testimony.
Good evening. I am Stacy Ward, the Superintendent of the Roxbury Central School, a rural district in Delaware County with 220 pre-K through grade 12 learners. Thank you for making Lawrence a stop on your tour. Today, I will speak about the sparsity factor, one component of the Pupil Need Index. Sparsity is based on enrollment per square mile. Our district covers 84 square miles. My district's enrollment per square mile is 2.6 children. There are many challenges inherent with educating students with this sparsity. I will share two examples. Rural schools face additional transportation costs. No one wants a five-year-old to ride a school bus for 75 minutes. Therefore, we work hard to provide efficient and timely runs to transport students to and from school. Our buses collectively travel over 240 miles each day just to bring the kids to and from school. This does not include late runs, special ed runs, athletics, or field trips. I recognize that we receive transportation aid, but this does not support all of the unique rural needs. Secondly, I'd like to discuss related services. Our district might have two students who need occupational therapy and six students that need physical therapy. Many rural districts provide these related services through a shared service agreement. Shared services can be costly, especially when serving a large geographic area. A therapist will likely travel more than 45 minutes between our school districts. We also face a limited number of providers. Transportation and shared services are just two examples of the costs that impact large rural schools. A fair and thoughtful weighting of the sparsity factor in the formula will allow rural schools to ensure that all student needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Chris Shear, and I have the privilege of serving as a superintendent at Milford Central School, a rural district in Otsego County with an enrollment of 348 amazing learners in grades pre-K through 12. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here today to discuss the critical issue of funding special education. My district has a special education classification rate of 18%. The Foundation Aid Formula is designed to ensure that all schools receive necessary funding to provide a quality education for every student. However, however, there's a significant concern regarding how special education is impacted by this current weighting in the formula. The reimbursement provided is simply not enough to meet the needs of our students and students within our region. Special education requires a high level of resources, including specialized staff, tailored instructional materials, and additional support. According to a report by the Office of the State Comptroller in 2020, the cost to educate a student with a disability is, on average, 84% more expensive than that of a general education student, and rising faster every year. Yet, the current formula does not adequately reflect that reality. The weighting for special education in the formula is insufficient, leading to a shortfall in funding that directly impacts the quality of education and support that our students receive. We must acknowledge that the increase in the cost to educate a student with an IAP or a 504 plan has outpaced the adjustments made in the formula. This discrepancy places a significant strain on our school district and those around us, and we're forced to make very difficult decisions that can compromise the educational experience of our most vulnerable students. I urge the institute to take a closer look at how the formula currently is calculated. We need a formula that accurately reflects the true cost of educating our most vulnerable students. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Before we go, can I have speakers six to 10? Come on up and -- Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Bennett, the proud superintendent of 250 pre-K to 12 students at Skeneva Central School and part of the ONC BOCES. Thank you for considering the specific challenges faced by rural schools. Tonight, I want to address a matter that affects all of us, the ongoing efforts to maintain and improve our school facilities. Unfortunately, the proposed reductions in Foundation Aid strained our budget process, forcing us to carefully evaluate every dollar spent as we struggle with added expenses and unfended mandates. This reduction comes at a time when costs are steadily increasing, particularly in maintenance contracts. Yearly repair costs have become increasingly burdensome. These financial strains directly influence our ability to maintain our school buildings effectively. My school has needed a roof project for many years. We continually need to take the time and expense to stop the leaks, and the additional repair costs need to come from our yearly budget. The significant challenges we are facing is the unexpected costs of repair and replacements. This year, we discovered substantial damage and a scarcity of parts needed for our 40-year-old boilers. As a result, we have submitted an emergency project to replace the boilers. The project will cost nearly $1 million, which is approximately 10% of our school budget. In response to these challenges, we've been forced to make difficult decisions. While never easy, these measures are taken to prioritize the long-term financial health of our schools. Despite these challenges, we remain dedicated to the upkeep of our school buildings. It is imperative that we continue to invest in the safety and functionality of our facilities. Our students deserve an environment that supports their learning and growth, free from distraction or disrepair. In conclusion, I ask that you continue to evaluate by which education and all of the associated needs and mandates are funded. Maintenance of our school buildings is the only one of these components, but is essential and quite costly. By investing in this, we are investing in the future of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Douglas Wyatt Jr. I'm proud to be the Superintendent of South Courtrite Central School District. We're a small rural school district of approximately 320 lifelong learners. I speak tonight on behalf of my school district and the 19-component school districts that make up the ONC BOCES region. I want to thank you for considering the specific challenges that face the rural schools like ours. I want to speak briefly about poverty weighting as part of the Pupil Need Index and its importance in the formula for our Foundation Aid. The percentage of students of poverty must be continued as a significant component of the formula. We utilize these funds to foster stronger relationships with families and communities, which is crucial for creating a supportive environment for all of our students. Students in poverty face additional challenges outside of school, such as unstable housing, food insecurity, and limited access to healthcare. Schools with adequate funding can provide or coordinate support services to help mitigate these barriers. Breaking down these barriers helps improve student attendance, decrease disruptive behaviors, and increase student achievement. Ensuring that all students, regardless of their socioeconomic status, have access to quality education is a matter of equity and social justice. Adequate funding helps bridge the gap between wealthy and impoverished communities, promoting equal opportunities for all students. In conclusion, I ask that you continue to evaluate how education and all associated needs and mandates are funded. Poverty weighting is only one of those components, but it is essential to the conversation. By investing in it, we are investing in our children's future.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Whipple, Superintendent of Charlotte Valley Central School District with enrollment of 370 students pre-K through 12. NICE had recently passed new graduation measures that will hopefully provide students of more equitable ways to show academic proficiency. We applaud the department for taking these steps. What is important to understand about small rural schools is how we are forced to maximize the use of our teaching staff to simply meet their current requirements and regulations. Our staff teaches multiple grade levels and courses to fulfill current requirements. As an example, my ELA teacher teaches two sections of English VII, one of English IX, two of English XI, and one AIS class, leaving no room for additional course load or elective-type classes. This example is the norm throughout our district. The proposed graduation measures call for the portrait of a graduate to be the framework for every student, which occurs through expanding learning opportunities to develop equity amongst our schools and students. However, if the goal is to provide equity, then providing our rural schools with the funding to implement these changes must occur. Each year, I am challenged with deciding how to improve, but mostly maintain, our student programming through rising costs, regulations, and mandates. Do I allocate funds to our AIS program or to building and student security? The margin of financial and programmatic flexibility is razor-thin. These new measures will undoubtedly necessitate hiring more staff or major regulation changes. Charlotte Valley's budget is dependent on 61% state aid. Each year that we receive level state aid is a year our tax base needs to close the gap. A 1% increase of our tax levy will only generate $31,000 of new money, which is sometimes equivalent to the increase in electric and gas expenses for a single year. I implore you to remember there were students in our rural districts that needed leaders to advocate for their equity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm James Ecklin, Business Manager of Stanford Central School, district of 260 students who are extremely reliant on state aid and a SAVE-HARMLESS. Half the districts in New York State are on SAVE-HARMLESS. Comparing the 2000 Census to now, that has taken 20 years for the enrollments to have changed. It is unfair to have the enrollment change needs to impact these districts. Stanford's SAVE-HARMLESS is $1.9 million, that's close to 20% of our entire budget. To offset these losses, we'd have to increase our taxes by 45% for the local share. This would be completely unrealistic to have any community bear this type of increase in a one- to two-year period. If SAVE-HARMLESS eliminated, the formula for the tax cap should be applied and that no reduction in state aid no reduction in state aid should be greater than the tax cap of each year. In nineteen school districts in the ONC Bosse's, seventeen are on safe harmless. That is nineteen point five million dollars. To eliminate that would be a twenty-five percent reduction in our local Bosse's alone in foundation aid. Schools have been rightsizing over the past twenty years, sharing with Bosse's, neighboring districts, for transportation, teachers, sports, CBO, the list goes on and on. There's only a certain level of rightsizing that can happen to maintain a fair and equitable education for all students. It's important to note, Stanford's special education budget is one point five million, fifteen percent of the total budget. One family moves in and out can wipe out our four percent fund balance. The reduction of the Safe Harmless would be a reduction of seventeen full-time teachers to our area, would be twenty percent of our staff. Considering the foundation aid impact of the formula at the Safe Harmless, please consider rural districts and how it would affect our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you hold on for a second?
Yep.
We good on the clock now? You good? Go ahead.
My name is Kai Deleva. I am the proud superintendent of the Watkins Glen Central School District. I am joined today by our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Kyle Percy. Each day, we serve approximately nine hundred and fifteen students in the picturesque southern Figure Lakes region. Our enrollment has decreased forty percent since the graduating class of two thousand. Conversely, just last year, our property valuations increased two hundred and forty-five million dollars. Our scenic views, award-winning wines, our famous racetrack draw tourists from all over the world, which lead to a lack of affordable housing in a hyper-tax constituency. We are a proud Safe Harmless school. Our district has not sat idly by in hopes that our enrollment would increase. In two thousand thirteen, we consolidate our schools into a pre-K through twelve campus, reducing our facility size by approximately thirty-five percent through the closure of our historic middle school building. Although challenging in many ways, this decision has enabled our district to utilize resources more efficiently, maintaining rigorous opportunities for our students. The Safe Harmless provision has allowed us to maintain our academic program while strategically adjusting to our dropping enrollment. In the two thousand twenty-five executive budget proposal, reduced our funding by one point nine million dollars. In order to close that gap, the district would have had to increase our tax levy by seventeen percent. This cut would have necessitated eliminating my much-needed faculty and staff, undermining our ability to offer vital programming to support our students. Our recommendations: Consider revising the formula by incorporating the most recent and accurate enrollment figures along with poverty data, ensuring that they reflect the district's actual economic landscape. This will provide a more precise measure of wealth, aligning to state aid and district's true needs. Lastly, the multimillion-dollar lake homes lining Seneca Lake, the yachts that move across it, and the race cars that drive through our village streets are not representative of the students walking through our hallways of our single campus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Hold on. If you would wait one second. Can I have eleven to fifteen, please? You can go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Chase, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources at Otsego Northern Catskills Bosse's. I've been with ONC Bosse's for over eighteen years and appreciate the chance to share my insights for your study. One key aspect of the foundation aid study is the governor's stipulation to examine district fund balances and reserves. District leadership and governance teams are transparent about these through budget documents, tax cap reports, reserve plans, and external audit reports that can be found on their websites. Here's a brief overview of why understanding fund balance and reserves is crucial when adjusting state aid formulas. School districts face a four percent cap on unassigned fund balance. For instance, a district with a ten million dollar budget can only hold a maximum of four hundred thousand in unassigned fund balance. Unexpected costs, such as special education services or even new mandates, can quickly deplete this. Limited unassigned fund balance can also lead to borrowing costs until tax revenues are received. Beyond unassigned fund balance, districts may have reserves for specific future expenditures like capital projects, unemployment, retirement contributions, or repair, to name a few. These reserves must be clearly documented and only used for designated purposes. Districts must follow certain rules for each reserve's creation, funding, and usage. Some reserves, such as the Capital Reserve Fund, require voter approval, adding oversight and potential delays. Additionally, reserves are subject to state reporting requirements. Despite their importance, fund balances and reserves are constrained by...
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Nate Jones, the proud Assistant Superintendent of ONC Bosse's and previously the superintendent of Hunter Tannersville Central School, with an enrollment of three hundred and twenty-five learners, K-12. I thank you for making Lawrence a stop on your tour of the state to hear about the realities that our schools face. Since the inception of the New York State Foundation Aid Formula, our schools have increased financial demands as we work to respond to heightened expectations for programs and services to meet the needs of our learners. Today, I want to discuss the effects of the New York State Property Tax Cap on our school districts. In the past, school districts had a degree of flexibility. When property values increased, they could leverage this growth to raise the tax levy while keeping tax rate increases minimal. This balancing act allowed districts to offset the impact of the increased commonwealth ratio. However, the implementation of property tax cap has changed this. The cap limits the ability of school districts to increase their tax levies beyond a certain threshold, regardless of significant property value increases which our region has faced. While this cap aims to provide taxpayers with predictability and control over rising property taxes, it inadvertently restricts the financial flexibility of school districts. This restriction means that even if property values rise significantly, districts cannot correspondingly increase their tax levy to maintain or improve services without potentially exceeding the cap. Consequently, our schools are faced with a double-edged sword. Higher property values raise their CWR, which reduces state aid, while the cap limits their ability to compensate for this loss through local taxes. In conclusion, I ask that you continue to evaluate how education and all associated needs and mandates are funded. By investing in it, we are investing in our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Sarah Spross, the superintendent of the Cooperstown Central School District with an enrollment of seven hundred and eighty-seven learners, K through twelve. I speak today on behalf of my school district and the nineteen component districts that make up the ONC region. Thank you for considering the specific challenges faced by rural schools like ours. We are faced with increasing financial demands and are focused on issues of regionalization, collaborative services and opportunities, workforce development, college and career connections, and alignment with the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission. Tonight, I want to speak about the Regional Cost Index, which is a key component of the foundation aid formula. The Regional Cost Index is based on wages and salaries of workers in jobs requiring credentials similar to those of teachers. New York State is divided into nine regions. Index values range from one point zero in the North Country and Mohawk Valley to one point four two five in New York City, Long Island. Our Regional Cost Index is one point one two four. A primary concern with the current model is the overwhelming size of the regions. The size disparity may create dramatically different regional cost indices for neighboring districts and does not recognize the unique circumstances of a district. For example, Cooperstown is often faced with paying higher wages than other districts due to the cost of living. However, the current model requires us to use the same regional cost index. Knowing that the Regional Cost Index has not been updated since two thousand and seven and that the regions are too large and disparate, the boundaries in size need to be reexamined. In conclusion, I ask that you continue to evaluate how education and all associated needs and mandates are funded. The Regional Cost Index is just one. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Michelle Jacobson. I'm a school board president from Hamilton Central School. Our school consists of five hundred and forty students and one hundred and thirteen staff in a pre-K through twelve building. Thank you for the opportunity. I have a few points to mention. Ever-changing student needs and the cost of special education to our district is something that needs to be evaluated in this formula. I hope that this formula can worry about the students and the cost of educating them. Predictability: We need to make sure that we have the ability to know what we are getting from the state in a timely manner to help our budget process and to ensure the community members know what they are voting on when it comes time to the school vote. Declining enrollment: It is something that will not actually mean a cost savings in our district. Twenty percent decline in students wouldn't change our staffing needs. We would still need two teachers per grade for our students. So please keep this in mind as well. Thank you for considering and for being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this very important topic. My name is Dr. Dave Richards, superintendent of schools at nearby Unitigo, a merged district in the DCMO Bosse's of about eight hundred and fifty students. Two minutes is really not enough time to make comments on such a complex formula, but I'm going to try to talk about a couple of things. First, the combined wealth ratio needs to be calculated differently than it is now. To give equal value, as we've heard earlier, to property values and income needs to be changed. More emphasis needs to be placed on income. Second, we've also heard this, but a revamped foundation aid formula also needs to use more recent and more accurate measures of poverty and regional costs using data such as the small income and poverty estimates to measure true poverty levels in a district. Ultimately, though, it's about more than numbers. Our numbers have names. Schools in this region are an important part of the community. We're all inexorably dependent on foundation aid to continue to operate. Most of us receive somewhere around two-thirds of our revenue in foundation and state aid. In my district, a two percent increase in the tax levy will generate a hundred and forty thousand, about enough to pay for one teacher with fringe. Our district received no increase in foundation aid this year, even though our expenses increased by more than three percent. Fewer students does not mean lower expenses. Student needs have increased greatly. We continue to do more and more for our students while facing uncertain funding. Ultimately, our schools cannot provide our children the education without a foundation aid formula.
Thank you. Again, I would encourage you, if you're reading testimony, please submit your testimony as written testimony. Everything will be read and reviewed. Before you start, can I have sixteen to twenty, please? You're up.
Hello. My name is Corey Duklos. I'm a board member in Hamilton Central School District, so I know what it's like to spend your evening listening to people give their opinions on how education should be run. I would ask that whatever your recommendations are to the legislature, that you encourage them to have a foundation aid formula that is more predictable, more equitable, and more generous. It needs to be predictable because our business teams and our administrators need the time to prepare the budget, board members need time to consider it, and our voters need time to give their input on that. That did not happen this year and rarely does. It needs to be more equitable because there are so many needs, and our needs are only growing. We, this year, saw a record thirty percent increase in our K through twelve students with IAPs or five oh four plans. Those costs are not being met. As a member of NISBA's DEI Committee, I know that those same needs exist all across the state, and they affect the most vulnerable people in our society. And that leads me to my final point. This needs to be a formula that's more generous. Far too often, we fail to act as a society in a way that affects our children. Whether it's gun safety, mental health issue, food insecurity, or, in this case, school funding, when we don't do what's hard, our kids are the ones that suffer. So whatever you come up with, someone's not going to like it. So why not err on the side that doesn't put the burden on our kids? I'd rather take the burden than make the kids suffer. So please, whatever your recommendations are, please make sure that they are more predictable, more equitable, and more generous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Laurel Dutcher. I'm the oddball here. I'm a teacher. I have been teaching for over thirty years in the primary grades at Franklin Central School. For me, underfunding rural schools is a civil rights issue. Our rural children deserve to attend schools in their own communities and to access the same quality education as the other children throughout New York. Under the governor's proposed budget, we were cut well over a million dollars in foundation aid. We experienced cuts, even with what was restored, to nearly every department, a loss to an already very sparse faculty and staff. Difficulties with the formula include the wealth ratio, which currently lists Franklin as a wealthy district. Here are some facts. Our per capita income is thirty-seven thousand dollars. Twenty-three percent of our children are living in poverty. In our county, thirty-three percent of the households are living below the Alice threshold. Our school and most of the schools, I think, represented here qualify for the community eligibility program for free and reduced lunch. We are not wealthy. Our students are not wealthy. Additionally, we're a very small agriculturally-based town. We have less ability to produce revenue. Our tax base is small. The foundation aid formula is currently using twenty-four-year-old data from the census of two thousand. Reducing funding for us creates a lack of equity for our rural New York students. We have fewer teachers, fewer academic programs, fewer opportunities for our kids. Uncertain funding has resulted in excessive teacher and administration turnover rates in an atmosphere where finding teachers is already difficult. Please find a formula that recognizes that wealthy people in our district are not the ones walking in our hallways.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Zedek, and I'm the Northeast Representative for the National Energy Management Institute. I'm also testifying today on behalf of the sheet metal and air conditioning contractors' National Association of New York State. Today, I'd like to talk to you a bit about the importance of indoor air quality in school buildings and how, including funding in the state education funding formula for IACU, can provide significant benefits for students, faculty, and taxpayers in New York. In my written testimony, I've provided some highlights and links for research that have been done on the benefits of proper ventilation in schools. I want to emphasize what I've just said: proper ventilation. The building codes adopt minimum ventilation standards, which are taken from ASHRAE standards. They set the minimum amount of ventilation air each person and room must have. However, in practice, once a building is built, tested, and turned over, these ventilation rates are almost never verified or adjusted as the building needs change. This can, and in my experience as a technician, nearly always does result in a significant shortage of ventilation air being provided to classrooms and schools in general. One thing that always sticks out to me is that not having the proper amount of ventilation air has the same detrimental effect on a student's level of attention as missing breakfast. The studies I have provided show that this can lead to decreases in student and staff performance and attendance, and in many cases, lead to an increase in energy use by schools and districts due to HVAC equipment not performing as designed. Improving the performance of school HVAC systems is one of the most reliable ways to enhance public health and academic excellence. This is why I'm asking you today to consider implementing the funding necessary for a school ventilation and energy efficiency assessment, repair, and verification program like what has been recommended by ASHRAE Technical Committee, nine point seven of educational facilities. The professionals at ASHRAE estimate that it would cost between thirty-five and seventy-five cents per square foot to perform ventilation verification assessments and determine the specific needs of each school and utilize the finite amount of funding in the state funding formula to ensure that every school's HVAC system gets the attention it deserves, providing equitable care for every student across the state. Including IACU in the state school aid formula ensures that every child, regardless of their school location...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Jamie Meisteros, the proud superintendent of the Morris Central School District. I speak behalf today on my three hundred and twenty learners, my own five children, and the nineteen component districts that make up the ONC Bosse's region. I want to talk about mental health. It is no secret that in this post-pandemic environment, folks are struggling. These increasing needs, coupled with an unimaginable lack of resources in our region, means that the costs districts are facing in order to adequately address the demands of our population are skyrocketing. My students don't have access to mental health support. The nearest mental health clinic is twenty minutes away, and there is no... The nearest mental health clinic is 20 minutes away, and there is no public transportation. While we partner with Bassett Hospital to run an in-house clinic, they are unable to hire and retain qualified social workers, having cycled through more than half a dozen providers in four years. The 2023 Youth Risk Behavior Survey showed that nearly 1 in 5 regional youth have had someone make unwanted sexual advances. 25% of our children have felt hopeless for at least two weeks, and 14% of my learners have purposely hurt themselves in the last year. Our children are suffering, and this formula has the potential to help us help them. My school budget includes two counselors, and for a period of time, a grant allowed us to have a social worker on staff. When that grant ended, those dozens of students receiving care were dropped instantly, not because we didn't try, but because there's nowhere to send them. In my first year as superintendent, we had six suicide attempts. Almost all were reported to my teachers as the first line of defense. As a school district who relies heavily on state aid, I cannot afford the salaries needed to get appropriate mental health care without educating-- When you try to educate children who do not have appropriate mental health care, it's the same as trying to soothe an infant who is in a wet diaper. It is an exercise in futility. You, like us, are tasked with holding in the balance two of the most important things to people: their money and their children. Although mental health is only one of these components, it is essential to the conversation, and I hope you keep it at the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you start, I have no more registered speakers, correct? We're done? Good.
Good evening. My name is Brian Ayers, Superintendent at Franklin Central School. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here today to advocate for a revised formula that reflects the true economic conditions of our district. This includes revisiting the use of adjusted gross income and other wealth factors to develop a different approach that considers the economic diversity in our district. The AGI fails to capture the true diversity of Franklin. Our AGI jumped from $49 million to $146 million in one year. Franklin's wealth indicators are five times higher than neighboring districts with the same demographics. Franklin's Wealth Income Index is 2.299 compared to the other 15 DCMO districts where the average income wealth index is .448. I will leave you with a few examples of the negative impact of the current aid formula and the proposed elimination of hold harmless that's had on Franklin. One, the initial aid run in January of '24 had Franklin losing nearly $1 million in foundation aid. If hold harmless wasn't restored, the district had two options: Ask the local taxpayers for a 40% increase in taxes to balance the budget. A 1% increase nets about $25,000. Two, eliminate all of our secondary teachers as well as other essential staff and send our 7 through 12 students to attend a neighboring district. There is transcript inequity in New York State. Students in surrounding schools have the ability to graduate with up to an associate's degree. The students at Franklin have no access to college courses except for possibly online. Franklin receives over $3 million in foundation aid. The elimination of Safe Harmless would cut aid by $2 million or 65%. We simply have no way of surviving the cuts of this magnitude. Our school vision is to provide an innovative, world-class education that propels each student to grow and succeed. Under the current formula, this simply isn't possible. We are fighting to survive, not excel. We thank you for considering modifications to the formula.
Thank you very much.
My name's Ramona Wenk. I am a prior superintendent of this school district for 23 years. Since retiring, I have been an interim superintendent at three of our local schools, and I also serve with ONC BOCES, doing labor relations on multiple other schools in this area. I'm incredibly proud of the work that we did at Lawrence Central School when my children attended here. We offered what I thought were a wide variety of elective courses and activities for students. And that's what I wanted to speak to you about, because I think that you've already heard wonderful amounts of data and information from the people that spoke. I think that they were all so well-prepared. I'm so impressed to say that they were my peers. I also want to thank you for hiring him, because he was one of my favorite students when he was here at Lawrence Central School. And that's true. In any event, what I want to talk to you about is, we think we're doing so much work here for our students. We are trying to offer them so much. And when my youngest son went away to school, and I'm going to turn around and say, "He just graduated from medical school," okay? So there you go. He's in his first year of residency. He went to school and he said, "Mom, you have no idea what the advantages these other kids have had in the programs and the opportunities that have been available." I said, "Josiah, you had so much here at Lawrence. We did this, and this, and this, and this, and offered you," and he would stop. And then the next year, he would talk, and he'd say, "Mom, you have no idea of the benefits that children in more wealthy suburban districts have. Josiah, what we offered this, and this, and this here in our area." And I can hear all the other parents saying the same thing. And finally, I started to listen to him, and I stopped saying, "Josiah, you got to do this, and this, and this at Lawrence." And I said, "You need to just persevere, because I can't change the fact that those other kids had so much offered to them. You persevere."
Thank you. Thank you.